Broadbent Park, and we all have our own opinions about that, but the community as a whole answered that it was very important and important. And when we get into the open-ended questions, you're going to see water feature and splash pad as reoccurring open-ended answers. So when we asked if there was anything else or, you know, other things like that, splash pad kept coming up in people's answers. And then question number nine, how important is it to have landscaping and trees in Broadbent Park? This one was more overwhelming than any of the other ones with the somewhat indifferent and not at all being the lowest percentages and the important and very important being at a very high percentage. This one was really interesting. How important is it to have public art like murals and sculptures at Broadbent Park? This was the one that got the least amount of support from the community. Not that people were like, oh heck no, we don't want sculptures down there. It just wasn't as important to them as concert and event facilities or sports facilities and things like that. And then the final one is how important is it to have maintained public restrooms at Broadbent Park? And you can see how important that is. Essentially, you know, those are going to be, clean restrooms are essential to any of the activities, whether it's sports or concerts or playgrounds or car shows or whatever. I think we all know the restrooms at Broadbent need a little bit of an updating. The next question, number 12, is about concession stands. Again, moderate support on that one, mildly important, but probably the highest rate of indifference of people just being eh, take it or leave it, which is different from question number 13, which is how important is infrastructure for food trucks? And that one did get support. So I think if you had to answer the question of how do we feed people down at Broadbent Park, maintaining and operating concession stand is a lot less important to the community than having the ability to have food trucks down there. How important is it to have more parking available at Broadbent Park? Extremely important, and I think the open-ended questions kind of speak to that a little bit, a little bit better. That was the last question for the five-point rating scale of not important at all or very important. And then from question 15 on, we could dive in a little bit more specific about what people would support. So question 15 is just general, what facilities would you use the most at Broadbent Park? Check your top three choices. And your top three choices are water and splash pad feature is number one, playground and picnic area tied as number two and three, and then performing stage for concerts would be number four with lighting coming in next and then ball fields coming in after that. This was one of the ones with the open-ended question, and I'll, I won't read through all of these because some of them have a lot of answers in particular, but if you just kind of glance through what the open-ended ones are, you'll get things like kids events, bike and skate park, amphitheaters, walking paths, community gardens, skate park, skate park, skate park, BMF's, pump track and everything like that. Again, you can kind of go through and see the consistencies in there and they kind of continue on through with all the open-ended questions. Question 16 is what events would you go to if held at Broadbent Park? Concerts, number one, food truck festivals, number two, movie night, number three, and family gathering and events is your fourth choice or fourth most popular choices on that one right there. And again, that one was open-ended questions, so a couple of the, a couple of the events that people said specifically workout and fitness events, senior activities was a reoccurring theme, and seniors definitely came strong in answering this survey requesting for things, more things for seniors to do. Art shows, art in the park, one that said bring sports back if that's what we want to bring families together, and then fireworks shows and arts festivals. Question 17, what sports facilities would you like to see most at Broadbent Park? Playground took the, took the lead on that one. That was the number one answer. You had ice rink as number two, and then horseshoes and cornhole and volleyball kind of being the close third on that one. And when I did a survey during Fire and Ice last year, when I was asking people in the community, what, you know, what, what do you mostly do? Like what, what do you do just in general to kill time? Cornhole was the number one thing. Everybody across the board said that they, they play cornhole, one more cornhole facility, cornhole tournament. I mean, it was one of those things that just everybody was, was all for that. Some of the open-ended questions on that one for question 17, again, you get splash pad. One of the answers related to sports was that sports at other parks are not used, so keep this park as scenic and tree-filled space, senior activities, fireworks, musical playgrounds showed up a couple of times. That would be the harmony park.
How many times did you take this survey?
I did not take this survey once at all, so I did not, my influence is not anywhere on this survey whatsoever.
So what is a musical playground?
So what it is, it's called a harmony park, and they are industrial outdoor instruments that are tuned, bells, chimes, drums, things like that. They're all handicap accessible, so wheelchair friendly and things like that, but it's an opportunity for kids to make music, noise, some would say.
I'm just saying.
I mean, I'm not a public right.
Right, well, I was right across the street for a while there, so my, my exposure to the harmony park was first in Moab, going there mountain biking 20 years ago. It was the first in the country. The Brewery Arts Center in Carson City installed a harmony park, and it was one of those things where people at all times of the day and nights would walk past and enjoy the music or making the music.
Don't, and not to interrupt, but we've received a request on Zoom if everyone could either sit closer to your microphone at the table or pull it closer. You're still having trouble hearing.
But I'm okay.
Remove your mask when you speak. Thank you.
It's a, it's a new system, and we're going to be working on those levels and stuff as we go, but hopefully on the whole, it's better than it has been.
Question 18, what music and performing arts facilities would you most like to see at Broadbent Park? Power for events is, is a big deal, and that's not just for if we were having a concert series, that would be for the Silver State Classic Car Show, fireworks, you know, any of the events that we're looking to have down there. I think more power is necessary. Lighting in the park, if these were going to go well past sunset, movie screen came up quite a bit, and you'll see that drive-in movie theater or family movie nights was a reoccurring open-ended answer as well. So you can see kind of the open-ended questions. Bonfire ring was kind of a cool one that somebody came up with. Again, we put the open-ended questions in there because I want the community to blow my mind. You know, the reason I didn't answer this is because it's not about me and my frame of reference, you know, it's about what everybody else wants to see in their community park. So there were, there were some really good answers that came out that I think are worth considering. There were some really miserable answers too, probably not even worth typing, so we just eliminated those for the, for the sake of time and kept it, all the good ones right there. What I want to bring up in regards to question 18 and the music and performing arts is when Main Street did their downtown survey last winter, the number, well, the second most popular answer for what business or attraction would bring you out of your house into the downtown, number one was clothing, a clothing store. The second one was entertainment. And so as I'm reading, as I'm reading through this, my take home is, is essentially the community has already said they will come downtown for entertainment. When you look at the way that the answers have kind of swayed back and forth, it seems like arts and entertainment and events is more, more, is, is answered more often than sports and ball fields. It's just, it's just more popular. It's what the community's looking for, and I think Broadbent Park has that niche with its size, its location, the bleachers, all of that to really satisfy that, that arts, entertainment and events need that the community has. Question 19 is about barbecue facilities, and everybody wants to see more barbecue facilities, more shade, shade structures, trees and barbecue pits. One of the answers was is that on certain weekends in the summertime, you've got families in a line waiting for somebody to leave so that they can jump into that gazebo or that area and go ahead and have their, their experience. Question 20 is five page, three, three pages front and back, and I, and again, if you guys have all of these answers, I'm not going to read through all of them for the sake of time, but again, you've got some really, really creative answers, none of which I put in here. Again, I did not answer this survey, so this is strictly from your, your neighbors and fellow citizens, but you can kind of go through and see what they're, what they're looking for, and you can see the consistencies in those answers. Dog park came up quite a bit, but again, I think what you're going to find is, is trees and landscaping are very important, and arts and events, or excuse me, entertainment and events facilities take the cake for, for what people were talking about.
Can, can you answer what, when you say dog park? I mean, I have a dog, and we go to all the parks in the community. What do they mean by dog park versus what we already have?
You know, my, my guess on that would be from my frame of reference, it could be completely different from what these people were, were asking for. I would think what, one of the, one of the ones that went on further than just dog park was safe place to let my dog run. I would assume possibly a fenced-in area, something that might have agility, obstacles or things like that. But the converse of that was, is you had quite a few people that answered, we don't want a dog park. We don't have a full-time vet in town to handle dog attacks. Nobody's picking up poo in the park anyway, so why do we need a dog park? You know, so you, you definitely got both ends of the spectrum with, with that one.
So in a dog park, the dogs are unleashed, is that, in a typical?
In, the one time I've been to a dog park in San Diego, the dogs were unleashed, they were running around, and you just hoped that the people that had their dogs in there had well-behaved dogs. One of the ones that I saw in there that was kind of interesting was is when we, if we, if we decide to move forward with this and hire a professional designer, which I do recommend, we don't want citizens drawing on napkins and submitting this as, you know, final plans. I mean, we, if we're going to, if we're going to submit something as snipper and try to have the county prioritize it, then we're definitely going to want to have a professional designer. The one that stuck with me on those open-ended questions is, let's not look at the park as a whole piece, but look at it as the size of what we can segment off and put in as different sections and different areas that are all cohesive via walking paths and just like the flow of the park, but it certainly doesn't have to be a one, one idea, one part kind of thing. You can have with the size, the different areas and stuff like that. The armory did come up quite a bit, but I know the armory's off the table with the agreement that's going, so it's not even worth bringing that up. The final questions aren't quite as important as the open-ended ones, but it's pretty telling here for anybody who is trying to outreach into the community, where do you get your information about community events and how overwhelmingly it was social media? And that's essentially Facebook is where people are getting, getting their information from in this town, which is, which is cool, it's also very scary, you know, but at least you know what line of communication people are going for. And then the final question about where do you reside, a majority of these answers came from Citizens of Ely, 26% came from the county, and only 4% came from non-residents. So again, my, my take home on this, you guys probably all have different take homes, but mine is, is that Broadbent Park, where there's a need for entertainment and event space in town, there's certainly a support for concerts and things like arts in the park, the car shows, and I think Broadbent Park has the, the perfect size layout and position to satisfy that while at the same time bringing the population to downtown Ely, which is what we're trying to do in the first place, to support the businesses and everything like that. So I think this was discussion only, but if, if anybody does have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Come by the convention center anytime, and we can, we can go over this in more detail.
Any questions or comments on this discussion item?
I'd like to make this a gem. That comment is, this is great, this is put together real well, good presentation, Kyle. I guess the next discussion we're going to have to have is round 19 is this snippet? And that's going to be?
September.
September.
Yep.
So when you talk about a design person, I guess I may ask you, how would you go about doing that, or what's the next, what's the next step?
What I, what I would recommend is, is getting a subcommittee of representative from, from the city council, a representative from Main Street, maybe somebody from the business community, and go through this and prioritize what these answers would be so that we could come up with, when we go to a designer, say, this is, this is what we're looking for. These are, these are some of the goals, these are some of the priorities, and guide them that way. But again, I think we're at a really good time here, being that it's December, we're about to have, you know, quite a few months of winter. This is the time to go ahead and do that. But I certainly, the original purpose for doing this was to make sure that one person didn't have the say, so I think to, to stay in line with that, we get, we get a group of people that are stakeholders or at least, you know, want to see this move forward and, and see what that roundtable comes out of, you know? But I think anytime I work with a designer, if you can guide them through setting goals and kind of bullet points and say, we want, we want this checklist that you need to check off in your design, and then they use their professional experience to try to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll give Jennifer, but try to get some on the next agenda, we need to sort of get some action going forward.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments on the council? Hearing and seeing that, we'll move on to item four, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, approval of mayor's reappointment of Caitlin Roberts McMurray to the Animal Control Advisory Board during end of December 31st, 2024. Caitlin Roberts McMurray has just been passionate about this, and she's expressed an interest to be back on, and so I was happy to reappoint or recommend to the board that we reappoint.
I would definitely want to have her reappointed. I've been working with her on the Animal Control Board, she's really dedicated to the animals, actually all small and large, all kinds of animals in this area, including spooks maybe.
We won't put that against.
Anyway, I would like to see her maintain on that, she's doing a phenomenal job as far as I'm concerned, I've seen it, and I, I'm really impressed. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion on that item.
I would move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, approval of proclamation declared January 2021 as National Radar Action Month in the city of Ely. You've got our fun flyer and all of the dire warnings. I'll entertain a motion on that side.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah, Kurt motions. Ed will second again.
I have one question.
Yeah.
I have one question. It says on the screen that?
I'm sorry, Councilman Spear, can you remove your mask? Because the feedback there is, is when people remove their mask, it can be heard.
I'm sorry, they never asked me to do that, I'm from a bank. It says in here that the short-term radiation test kits are available to Nevada residents at cooperative extension offices listed or by filling out the attached coupon. I wonder how we can get that attached coupon?
On the left.
Okay, perfect, that's the only thing I have.
And that's something we could probably put on the website and see if we can find it, is it in? Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so order.
Just to clarify, who were the council members that made the question?
Councilman Carson motioned and Councilman Spear seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Item six, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, determination of three priority concerns to be conveyed to the Nevada Legislature and/or the United States Congress by the Nevada League of Cities. This was an item request from Wesley Harper, make sure I got that name right, at the Nevada League of Cities, that we put it before the board for their input or the council for their input on what they would like as their top few priorities for them to talk about. We discussed a couple of options, such as the mining tax.
The second one that I mentioned to Mr. Harper was the greenup program has really been shelved in the last year. We reapplied last summer when our grant, or excuse me, in the summer of 2019, when our grant expired, but right now we are not getting reimbursed for having to process metal from residences right now, and we were. So that would be a nice grant program to get reinstated on the federal level for us. That's through the BLM.
So with that, I'll entertain ideas from the council.
I mean, I think that the mining taxes is paramount. I, I mean, that speaks to the, to, I mean, that makes or breaks our community, so I think that needs to be high on the list.
So mining tax, and we have two other, two other options there.
I definitely support Jennifer's comment on the greenup program too, that's essential, otherwise we're going to have our, out in the outback country places filled full of garbage again.
Hearing and seeing that, certainly they'll accept two. If there's a motion you guys want to make about that.
I would move to accept those two as prioritizing, prioritize items for the legislature.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so order. Item seven, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, acceptance of Brad Christiansen's resignation as city building official effective February 27th, 2021. You all have his letter in there, I'll accept a motion on this item.
With regret, I will make the motion to accept Brad's letter of resignation. He has done an outstanding job in my opinion, and it's going to be, we need to find somebody which the next item will do to help fill this big void. Thank you, that's my motion.
We have motion, we have a second?
I would second, but his letter says the 26th, so unless we want to make him work an extra day for how soon he could.
I want to make him work an extra day, so.
Can I just clarify too, he's not resigning, he's retiring.
Right.
So we have, is there anything we need to do about the discrepancy? Is there?
Well, I think it said on the last day is the 26th.
Well, was that, you said, Mayor, if you could take your mask off, we can hear you.
Is there any, is there anything we need to do about those two discrepancies in dates? But the determinant, something said?
Oh, I just figured that his last day is the 26th, so effectively on the 27th.
Oh, that's how I get it too.
Yeah.
For my purposes, hers will say his last day is his, is his last day, so it will be the 26th.
Okay. So we have a motion, did we have a second?
I, I would.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Item eight, council member, city treasurer, trust, discussion for possible action, approval of building official recruitment efforts taken upon receipt of Brad Christiansen's resignation. I believe Janet has some information on where they're advertising for that.
Yeah, I, for the sake of trying to get things going, I have already advertised, I put it in the, in the state department office, it's going to be advertised in the paper, and Brad had the best suggestion, we advertised it, the ICC, which is the national code council or something like that, and we have received four applications. I've only received, well, we received four resumes. I sent back to all of them that I need them to fill out an application, and I've received one of those so far, but I will be contacting them tomorrow now that this is official and try to get interviews set up for the first meeting in January.
Well, and just for the council's information, we should note that the code kind of treats his position, the building official's position a little differently than?
Well, he's not in quotes as a public official. I think that's something we need to address eventually, but we don't want to wait on hiring somebody to get that in because that's a process.
Sure.
But the fact that he's in exempt position and the answers to the board means that you guys hire him, so you guys interview him, and we'll make the decision on who, who is hired.
So the, the mayor will not be involved in that, and will not be doing any appointments, just running to the board?
Yes.
Item 10, councilwoman Beecher, discussion for possible action, approval of, because of the, the, approval of resolution 2020, 13, 13, a resolution allowing Ely City Fire Rescue and Emergency Medical Services to collect money for services removed on all calls.
I believe we had spoken about this before, I'm so sorry, I, I think we had spoken about this before regarding, there were some that weren't being billed, and so we were going to try to build those, and then any that weren't able to be collected on were going to be written off. That was, that was the discussion before, so this is just the resolution for that.
Any questions? All in, any motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item 11, I will turn the gamble over to Portman Beecher for that.
Okay, councilwoman Beecher, discussion for possible action, approval of tracage rate agreement between the city of Ely and Nevada Northern Railway Foundation Incorporated and Great Basin and Northern Railroad Incorporated. So we have the adjusted agreement here in front of us. There, there has been an agreement in place, this is just making some, some adjustments and clarifications to that. If anyone has any questions?
I don't have, I can move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, and we'll pass the gamble back to Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item 12, Councilman Spear, discussion for possible action, approval to abate hazardous conditions existing in 513 Nevada Avenue pursuant to Ely Code 4-2-14.
I'd ask to sponsor this, the, I've got a couple of concerns about it, and one is that if property does have some hazardous stuff on it, it needs to be taken off. It's sad that one neighbor can take and form a complaint and have eventually lean someone else's property, even though I do believe that there's some stuff needs to be taken off of that property owner. I know that they've been trying to reach out to this Mr. Oxborough and his family, and I understand it's like three siblings that own that together, so I'm not sure who's paying the property taxes on it, but it's undeliverable. I mean, it came back to us, so I guess the dangers down there need to be removed, we need to lean the property for that, but I, there's so many other properties that need to be cleaned up as well, and that's coming up. And one of them, you know, we're, we're going to lean someone's property in Stappers Fields, but trees were topped down a year ago, weeds has not been touched, and city's own property is a nuisance in this as well, and a lot of kids play up there, so. Anyway, this is wrong here because we have a formal complaint from a, from a resident in that area to go ahead and clean this up, so.
Just, just for the clarity of the record, I want to make sure that the council understands that this kind of a process doesn't start just because one person complains, but because they complain, and then the city staff then verifies that there is actually an issue. Without the verification, nothing happens. If the city shows up and the complaint is found to be erroneous or needless, then nothing happens. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't want it to seem like people are just filing letters and then the city's seizing property, if that's, if that's clear enough.
It appears that due diligence was done here, and I think that just, it's, it's important to clarify that just because there are other properties in the city or wherever that also need to be cleaned up, we don't need to start somewhere is, is wrong, I think. I think we, I mean, the, the process needs to start, and we need to start getting this, this situation under control. There are many, many properties that are, that are nuisances and hazards as far as fire or, or, or children playing who can get into, you know, I mean, these properties need to be taken care of, and, and it, it looks like proper procedure has been followed as far as trying to, to contact these business owners or property owners, and I, I mean, I'm in full support, I would move to approve.
Oh, kind of hazardous material, did you, what, you mentioned possible hazardous material?
Well, there's a propanation down there, there's a couple of 55-gallon gums, and one thing that I've seen on that that probably gave me a little more concern than, than that was, there's an old floor, some type of a building that has a crawl space underneath it, and that is definitely something that'd be pretty easy for some kids playing, running down through there, go into that crawl space, and they, if they got hurt, nobody, there's not enough, nobody pulls them up through, but even here, I mean, there's a very not enough, nobody pulls enough through, but even here, I mean, it's a very small area, not even as big as this room we're sitting in. It probably half the size of this room, but it is got a big hole in the floor already. So I, you know, it, it, it needs to be cleaned up. I just wish we could have got a hole in some way, but it definitely needs to be.
Is the property tax paid up on this? Did we know?
I believe they are.
So they, they might have just chosen not to accept the letter? Who knows?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we do have a motion from Councilwoman Beecher.
I have one quick, one other question. I go down there, this is just a lot of the budget junk in it.